Good morning. I'm going to officially call the Legislation Policy Development Committee to order, and I'd like to welcome all our new committee members that are joining us, some for the first time. We're going to get started right away with our update from John and Glenn on COVID-19. John, you're muted still.
So, Charlene, are you going to do the introduction for this?
Yes, I'm having a little difficulty here, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, good morning, policy committee members. It's wonderful to see you all, and we're pleased this morning to share with you the work that has been happening in the agency around supporting our educators, our families, or students, and our districts' community in general. And without further delay, we're pleased to, there's a lot of information just based on the work that's been going on, and so I'm going to pause here and turn things over to our team: John Frazanelli, Glenn Peterson, and I know Ajit will come back in to share a part of that work as well. So with that, I will let them get started. Thank you.
So I see Ajit's still muted, and he's got the first part of this. There you go.
Good morning. Thank you, Charlene, for the intro. So as you know, the department has been extremely busy with supporting our districts with transitioning to distance learning after class cancellations due to COVID-19. Our academic office created four volumes of resources to help districts that focused on content areas, student data privacy assessment, professional learning, and our student support resources. These were all distance learning resources that were created. The department also worked collaboratively with several philanthropic contributions. The most prominent of those, you might have heard, are the 60,000 laptops from the Partnership for Connecticut that were made available for high school students in alliance districts, as well as other districts, and those 60,000 laptops are being distributed. We also made available, or received a donation from the Newey family, for 187,000 Scholastic book packs for pre-K through eighth students in alliance districts and several other districts. The Learn From Home Task Force was established by the governor and the commissioner to coordinate the distribution. And by the way, when we send around this PowerPoint, the links are embedded links, and they'll take you to those particular pages. We are also working actively with the LEGO group to distribute replay sets, blocks, for public school students, and they've already been distributed to first graders in Waterbury and Bridgeport, and to 180 students in Enfield as well. So that work is ongoing. We've conducted multiple needs assessments of districts in terms of their readiness for distance learning, and we've also more recently conducted survey on distance learning participation and barriers to access. As you know, the CARES Act is the supplemental funding that's being made available to districts. That is in process, and the link here talks about the four priorities. Obviously, front and center is equitable access to technology, but the department is also working actively on access to high-quality online curriculum, and talking about education recovery and reopening, as well as social-emotional well-being. The department is also represented on the Governor's Work Group on Rapid Connectivity Deployment, and this one is really trying to solve for those students who, despite the best efforts of everyone, still have Wi-Fi connectivity issues. They may be in our, a lot of them are in our alliance districts, but there are also several rural pockets around the state, both in east and northwest Connecticut, where intervention and support is needed. In terms of professional development for districts, so not only did we provide static resources, we also provided dynamic resources. At the commissioner's urging, we created this professional support series, which was focused on two audiences. One was for educators, or here it says Professional Support Series for Districts. The other one was for families. So I'm going to kick this off with the district part and share a couple of slides, and then turn it over to John to continue from there. So the first thing we did was a multi-part webinar series on learning at a distance and journeys of Connecticut schools. And here, really, we're talking about having several school districts across the state share with their peers on how they're addressing curriculum, how they're meeting the challenges, what it means to work from home, teaching science, the arts. It was really a social studies, as well as agriculture and natural resources online. It was really a comprehensive approach across the content spectrum. And again, kudos to our academic office for leading a lot of this work. They did an unbelievable job. And our performance office also did some supports in terms of interim assessment administration remotely, as well as remote learning resources from Smarter Balanced, and provided tools through EdSite, our secure platform that gives longitudinal information on students. And lastly, for my point, is there were also resources provided, webinars and videos provided for English learners, including best practices for serving English learners, and distance learning resources as well. You'll notice that the dates on these events basically show you how we, many of them started in March or early April, and then they continued on. So we really ramped up very quickly to provide a whole array of supports and resources. So I'm now going to turn it over to, I believe, John.
No.
I think Glenn's going to start with the next slide.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Ajit. Back in early March, actually, probably mid-March, Charlene asked John and me to pull together some resources, particularly webinars and videos, that could support the field, support families and support students, as well as support districts. And we've made somewhere between, I didn't actually have a chance to count them all this morning, but I would say close to 20 different videos going to went out from our offices. Several were about social and emotional learning, and this was not only about the social-emotional learning of students and engaging students and families, but also the social-emotional learning of teachers and educators. There are several support videos for them, basically caring for the caregivers. And there are many that were not even listed on the website. There were kind of private invitation things. And we've done a number of workshops for folks like adult educators, alternative school educators, specialty groups with, and some of them are listed here, school nurses, school counselors, and folks like that. I think one of the most prominent ones on this page is the Student Voices webinar, because we have an actual video star in our midst. Ms. Benham participated in that, and I've heard nothing but very, very positive things from the field about that and your participation. So thank you very much. Can we go to the next slide? And so this is an example of one of the professional support series that went out. As you can see, the top one on the right, Jocelyn Mackey, Dr. Mackey and I made a presentation, or more of a check-in visit than a presentation, to the alternative school educators. But there were several of these types of things, another for homeless liaisons, many related to family engagement. And I'm not exactly sure of the total number of professional support series documents we sent out, but six or seven of them were related to the different things that we were doing in our offices. So, you know, lots and lots of people were involved in lots of things. And all of these are available on the CSD website under the COVID-19 section. And John, I think you're going to take the next one.
Hi, yes, good morning. My sound is cutting in and out, so Glenn, if you could just wave to me if my voice goes mute while I'm talking. I'm assuming you can hear me right now. There you go. Okay. So we, I think it's also important to mention that we've been partnering with our state agency partners on all levels, and you'll see that throughout some of the presentations that I'll talk about. And one of those areas is we partnered with the Department of Children and Families to produce two webinar series, one for parents and one for students on safe use of the internet. So we had an hour and a half program for parents on how to talk to their kids about safe use of the internet, and then we had a really nice opportunity to engage over 100 students logged on to participate in the student-specific internet safety training. The person who we brought on to do that is a former police officer and former online sort of predator catcher, and so that was a really nice opportunity. We're going to be repeating that, of course, through the summer and throughout the fall. We're also will be partnering with them to provide child trafficking and child abuse training district-specific. So that will be ongoing. We've also created something called Talk Tuesdays, which is an opportunity for folks working on student attendance on the district level to have some conversation about engaging students. We've had the commissioner and deputy commissioner of DCF come and speak to that group about DCF referrals, and we've had some really good conversations around summer programming and fall opening, and best practices for engaging students during COVID. This is, as Ajit mentioned, this is the location where all of these professional support series are listed on our website. So we can jump to the next slide. And again, these are more of our programs. You can see Student Voices is repeated there. We've engaged in particular, at the bottom of the C, with the Office of Early Childhood on the importance of play and predictability. Our in-house staff provided some conversations on resources to help children learn English and develop literacy and math skills while supporting their social-emotional supports, and additional supports for family tips on how to support their children, you know. One of the conversations was about that families are the first sort of line of defense, and how do families support their kids when kids are suffering from anxiety, et cetera. Next slide.
Thank you, John. This is Yeah, the next two are me, and then we're back to you, John. So hello again. One of the things I wanted to mention, to follow from what John said, is it wasn't just our staff that were doing these webinars and videos. We brought folks in from other departments, as John mentioned. We did one on managing during a crisis that included folks from DCF, CHDI, the Child Health and Development Institute, an organization we work with very closely, and lots of practitioners from the field. In the video that Ms. Benham participated in, there were students and educators from various districts, and that was something that we did many times. Some of the self-support, for example, for what we are calling the school-based mental health providers, folks like school counselors, social workers, and psychologists, we had folks who were from the district in those jobs, working with our staff to make presentations. I also wanted to mention, these next two slides are about supports for students with special needs. Brian Klinkowitz, our Division Director for Special Education, isn't on the call this morning, but we certainly wanted to list the extensive video-based support that we did. It's on this slide and the next, so you can take a look at these. But I also wanted to mention that our supports didn't ju, they weren't restricted to videos and webinars. We've sent out dozens, if not hundreds of pages of paper support, or virtual paper support, I guess, going through the commissioner's office on certainly a weekly, if not a daily basis. So can we go to the next slide? And so these are some of the additional special ed supports. Some of the topics that have gone out. All right, and we can go to the next slide, and John's going to take that.
Thanks, Glenn. So I wanted to just provide a brief update on the child nutrition programs in schools. As you're probably aware, we, the department had to sort of reauthorize our school, national school lunch programs, to switch to what the USDA refers to as a disaster feeding program. So we typically have about 109
You're cutting out a little, John.
The schools that participate in the program, and we were able to, quite frankly, in a few days, in a couple of weekends. Can you hear me now? Okay. And over a few, a couple of weekends, we were able to reauthorize 132 programs, and they began serving meals at, okay. Well, you can see what's on the slide. So we were serving meals at 400
So until John comes back in, I think he was just going to point out the data. 132 programs at 460 sites have provided 8 million takeaway school meals in the last, I don't want to get the, I'm assuming since March 17th. So the next slide is basically the EBT program, which is supplemental benefits. Used to be called SNAP, I believe, but approx, almost 300,000 students received a one-time benefit of $365 to support the student and family during the pandemic.
Glenn, you know, I'd like to jump in for a minute, and I know Ajit is still behind the scenes, but Ajit, I know why John is having some technical difficulties. I wanted folks to understand this pandemic EBT and what it took in a very short time for the state to get approval from the federal government to do this program, and the work that was done with their districts in order to make this happen. So Ajit, could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So I think the magic happened because of collaboration between offices and agencies. It was DataFolks. It was obviously John and his team working with the DSS partners, as well as our legal office to facilitate any data sharing agreements. And then ultimately, what ended up happening is what's on the slide, which is that we are able to provide this supplemental pandemic electronic benefits transfer card, not only to the Phase 1 students who are listed as Phase 1, those who traditionally receive SNAP benefits, but also to students who receive Medicaid. And the Phase 3, which is happening now, is to students who received free or reduced-priced meals when school was in session, but may not have been part of the SNAP or the Medicaid program. So we were able to collect student addresses for a lot of these students, do a ton of work behind the scenes, and then provide this information to DSS so that they could then issue really 300, approximately $365 per student, totaling to 105 million total for all three phases combined. So it was a massive effort, but really succeeded due to collaboration, communication between everybody across the agencies, and even within agencies.
Thanks, Ajit. And, you know, not to belast, supporting our kids and their families, but also putting $105 million in the economy, in the Connecticut economy, which I know folks were really thrilled to be able to do. Thank you for that. John, are you back on?
Yep, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Yep, just wanted to, thanks for coming. And Ajit's downplaying the fact that within a week's time, his team was able to literally collect over about 500,000 addresses from school districts in order to implement Phase 2 and Phase 3 of this program. So it was a total team effort, both in our agency and with DSS, and it's just a real significant accomplishment. Just one clarification on that program is that it is, the students who are eligible to receive that are anyone who's receiving meals under the federal program. So that includes, it does not include any school programs that don't participate in the federal program. We've gotten some questions on that. And it doesn't include preschool students who are part of the child and adult care program in daycare centers, but that's a significant amount of benefits going out to families. In addition to Phase 2 and 3, DSS had to purchase new cards for all of those, you know, approximately 150 or so thousand kids, because they hadn't had the cards prior to that. You may have heard about the Meals to Eat program, which is a rural food box delivery program in lieu of school meals. It's happening in Winchester and Torrington. Those are the USDA-designated areas for rural in Connecticut. And then we all continue to work on the state's FEMA application and extensions to see about other opportunities to feed families in Connecticut through some of that funding. So, thank you.
Okay, is that the end, John, of the presentation?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for it. Ajit, before I open up to the committee members, I do have a question. Did we get any feedback from teachers or parents about the Scholastic book packs? Have we gotten any kind of feedback about, were they useful, what were they like?
I think what we have heard is, at least what I'm aware of, is through some of the Twitter posts that we've seen from families in Bridgeport, where they've talked about writing letters to LEGO as a, as thank you. I've seen those on our Twitter feeds, but I don't know of a systematic feedback mechanism. I will check in with Chris Soto, who is sort of coordinating this work with Scholastic, and we will get back to the subcommittee.
Okay, thanks. I'm sure it was positive, but it'd be interesting to know, you know, what parents and teachers thought of the packs. I wasn't really sure what was actually one of them.
Yeah, each pack contains four, four or five books. It really depends on the grade. The link I have included in here actually spells out what is available, what books are available in each grade. And schools are distributing the packs, but also figuring out how to integrate it within their program, within their instructional program, and also potentially, as now that we're into the summer, as a supplemental summer learning activity. So, and I know we've had some conversations with districts about that, and our academic folks have actually created a little video to spark that thinking as well, in terms of approaches to integrating it.
And I just wanted to jump in, I'm sorry, before you turn it over to the members, to say that, why do you see a list of, the goal here was not just to show you the long list, but to give you a really sense of the levels of support, where staff were almost redeployed in the agency to say, how do we support educators? How do we support districts? How do we support families? How do we support students? And so what you see is kind of the combination of thinking about that level of support. And I think all of our webinars and the things that we've sent out have been well-received, and we also share them with other organizations and groups that we're connected with, especially getting things to families, so that they're able to see, to get that as well. And we are right now developing a partnership and relationship with CPTV as well, and/or, and so you know that that's in the works as well. So I'll stop there.
Well, actually, that was my Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Is that Jessa?
Yeah, sorry, Ms. Benham. I just wanted to jump in and praise the department for the hard work here and echo Charlene's words, and also note that, in my role as technical support for a lot of these documents, we did a lot of 50-state reviews and sort of consideration about what other states were doing. And I can say with confidence that Connecticut is really at the top for the state Department of Education providing resources and really being, taking the initiative to be really in the front of providing guidance and input. Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to note that as well.
No problem. And I agree with you 100%. The staff has just been terrific. And I agree, when you look at Connecticut and compare it to other states across the country, it's unbelievable, the work that's been done in such a short period of time, which, Charlene, you mentioned the videos and so forth, and I know they're on the website, and I watched some of the webinars. I'm wondering how else we can get that out there. I've had some inquiries from educators, some from parent educators of, you know, is there anything out there? And I've told them, go on the website. And it made me think that, you know, maybe we need to try to figure out how we distribute all that good information further. You know, I'm sure districts get it through their superintendents, but, you know, are we sure that it's going all the way through to the classroom teachers, to the parents, maybe local boards of ed? Because it's a wealth of information, especially the special ed and the EL information. It's really, really good stuff, and, you know, it's very helpful for them. So I think if they knew it was there, you know, perhaps, you know, we could look into maybe some kind of distributing, you know, beyond our website, I guess I'm saying. So, but I'm going to open it up to committee members.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is Karen. Thank you for this comprehensive presentation. A lot of great information. I'm interested in the food insecurity piece here, and two questions. One, the pandemic EBT, that's CARES Act money, I'm assuming, that funded that? So if someone could just clarify that for me. And then my second question around the emergency school meals program. Having figured out how to do the pandemic EBT, I was wondering if there's ever been any thought about, rather than the meals that families have to come to a school and pick up, and I know that there are many that are not coming to schools to pick up, whether there was any way of using or seeking approval to use the school meals program funds in a transfer similar to the pandemic EBT, where rather than families getting a prepackaged meal, they got the cash sort of associated with that, with that meal?
Yeah, thanks.
Require a lot of waivers and approvals, but I'm just wondering, has anybody ever gone down that path?
Yeah, I think the, first of all, the pandemic EBT funds is a separate program. It's not CARES Act funding. It's a separate application that states have to submit to the USDA. And the reason that they've created that program is exactly what you're talking about, is that for families who can't get to a school distribution site to get meals, and this is supposed to be the alternative way in which they can, which they can receive benefits, because the $365 for that time period equates to the equivalent value of daily breakfast and lunch. So it's essentially $5.70 per day that equals the cost of a breakfast and the cost of lunch. There isn't, there isn't a requirement that families do either or. If families are able to get to the site to pick up meals, they still can utilize the pandemic EBT benefits.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? Malia?
Thanks. A lot of really great information, and goodness, I wish I could, you know, go back and talk about each of them, but I have a sort of a more broad, general question that sort of picks up on a bit of what Erin was mentioning in terms of getting information out there, also recognizing we're now at the end of school, so to speak, for the majority of our districts. And so I'm sort of coupling a couple of questions together, which is, I had, so I work at a firm that we do the sort of 50-state scans and have done some, you know, surveying and research. We work, folks are familiar with Learning Heroes. We work with them, and had done a survey to find out about sort of the uptake from families in particular on all of the sorts of resources from families in particular on all of the sorts of resources that you all have done such a wonderful job at pulling together. So my question is less a, is not implying any criticism, because I know you all have done great work, but more of just a reflective, if you all have done any sort of analytics on, on that uptake, um, from, from families? Are you finding that, that folks are accessing that? Um, so it gets at, what do we need to do then later on? As we try to think about what happens and through the summer, but also into the fall? Not knowing what that's necessarily going to look like. Have we been reflective about how parents have taken that up? And then do we, is there plans on how we then think about that further distribution and support for families continuing on into the, into the fall?
So that, that is.
Speak about Jessa when, in your next reporting? Jessa?
Yeah, Charlene, if you want to jump in, I have a couple thoughts directly related to that. We can, yeah, and then we can talk about it a little more later, too.
Okay, perfect. Um, and thank you. That is a great question. Uh, we recognize as hard as we work and as thrilled as we are about the resources we have, getting it to, uh, families, uh, is really critically important to find out how that is working. We're, the mechanisms that we're using to get feedback. We have the, uh, Commissioner's Roundtable for Family and Community Engagement in Education. Uh, and we try to get information out to them as well. Uh, we also have, um, other groups who, you know, I know I personally have listed of what I call really good cultural brokers in communities, uh, that we've shared Malia information with and, and trying to get information. Uh, we, um, circ, uh, within 24 hours stood up a town hall for us, uh, a few weeks ago, where we had, uh, I think close to 200, uh, parents' voices there. And so we now have an infrastructure, to the point that you're making, to really go back and find out what was helpful, what wasn't, and to continue to find out what is still needed. So, um, we, it's, it's an important piece for us to find out especially. And we've worked very hard to make sure that we're hearing from, um, voices of communities that are none, usually traditionally not, not engaged, uh, you know, and I shouldn't say that, that we've not actively engaged in the conversation. And so we do have some abilities, uh, to go back and to do that and to continue to have that feedback loop. So we know it's not just about what we're doing, but what's the impact around that and what continues to be needed.
Yeah, and I was just gonna add to that just directly in relation to the question that, um, while we did, while I'm not on the, um, side of necessarily receiving the sort of data or feedback that just to sort of echo Charlene's words, we've, we've acknowledged that one of the things we're talking about is if people have issues with connectivity or devices or those kinds of things, providing internet content is potentially not as effective for certain groups. So I have a bi-weekly call with, um, representatives from the legal aid groups across the state. And we're talking too about how to best potentially repackage or, you know, I'm feeding them the information so that they can try to provide, um, as best they can to community groups and to parents that they work with, but also talking about how to best package this, especially next year, so that it is accessible to all of our, um, students and families.
And if I could just tag on really quickly, um, you know, the research that we had done, it's almost about, it's not necessarily, um, that the information is bad or even if it's not being put out there, right? Because, and you, you all, as well as tons of other vendors are trying to push as much information out there to help people. But it's also a matter of where's the mental state too of some families, right? We were all going through a crisis and just trying to figure out how to deal with life. That, um, that, you know, it just wasn't sort of in the stream potentially. But I think, you know, understanding that where families are going into the fall is going to be different from the crisis of where families were, you know, margin this last quarter of the, the school year. So some of those learnings can be really important, but they need to evolve too, because we'll be at a different part of the, of the, the crisis, so to speak, right? Well, we've been living in it for longer. So, thanks.
Malia, it is one of the reasons why, uh, I know Glenn, I think, talked about our Talk Tuesdays and why we, we're forging a strong relationship with the Department of Children and Families and why the commissioner and deputy commissioner that agency found it necessary to be on a call uh, with our, um, superintendents and others from districts, working with family engagement, uh, and wellbeing. It, it's for that reason, right? To make sure that, um, families and kids are not falling between the cracks. But we also need to recognize and appreciate the stresses that families are encountering. And we want to make sure that we're cautious, that we don't, for, for families that we're not able to connect with, that we don't automatically, you know, refer them to DCF and now we have a case that's opened for our family. And really that's the, that is the hard conversation and the key conversation that we're having across our, our sister agencies and supporting our districts in terms of what to do, uh, during this time. Uh, really recognizing really that tension that we need to be working with.
I wanted to echo what you were saying about like the, the fact that, like, when we come in fall, it's definitely going to be a good different part of the crisis. And I think, looking at like the presentation, um, I like this hot, special needs student specifically stood out to me because I think that I've talked to so many of those families and in my, in my district and surrounding districts. And I think they're definitely being hit with it very, very hard. And being able to access the virtual resources for them is, is definitely a, um, a challenge, I think. Because they're, again, like, they're in a different part of the crisis, I think, than, um, than how, uh, other families are. So I think being able to adapt, um, to get resources out to them in a different way, maybe in the fall, is something that we need to look at. But, yeah, I think the work is, uh, that you guys are doing is amazing. Um, and I love the presentation.
Jess, uh, Woody?
This is Woody. Uh, do we know how many students don't have online access?
And G, are you still on?
I think that would be a question for a G.
Yeah. Yeah, there is.
Yes, we're still, uh, finalizing the numbers, uh, from our, uh, survey that we conducted on participation and connectivity and hope to have that out very soon. But generally, the estimates are less than 10% of our student population. That's kind of where the numbers are, are coming in. It might be, you know, because we have estimates, we don't have act, you know, we didn't do a student level count, but we counted, asked districts to give us aggregate estimates. So it, it's definitely less than, uh, 10%, if not even a lot, lot lower.
This is, this is really important to have aggregated data though, because I think, I think we need to know that number in our districts of need where.
That's right. We do have it. We do have it by district. Uh, so we are actually looking at where are the pockets of need? And also the governor's office, like I mentioned in the update, the connectivity group that the governor's office has established has the right people who know how to solve these issues at the table and are really looking at the full plethora of options, including, uh, wired internet as, uh, wired internet access as well as cellular internet options. So all, uh, all hands are on deck to, to solve this. And it's going to be custom, local, and, and needing to account for student mobility as well. Because students, what, while we think we might have solved it in one situation, if they move, the connectivity problem might recur.
So, well, what's going to be done for those students that haven't had access and haven't been able to keep up? Is, is anything going to be done to address them?
Districts are already doing a lot. So when we actually contacted several districts, they have actually done a variety of things, including, uh, the most common one is to make hotspots, uh, like, uh, little, uh, cellular hotspots available to families and, and making that sort of dispersing that. The other strategy that we have heard is, uh, what we call wireless extenders, where they might have a bus or some other, uh, uh, setup, where they basically extend their school network out to a, a neighborhood or community where there is high need. So i- it's not perfect and it, it's not, uh, I, I wouldn't say we're definitely not at 100%, obviously. But I think districts are proactively taking some steps. And the department is also trying to work through the governor's office and also reach out to philanthropists to try to sort of fill the hole. So that, to the point about next year, we really need to be, uh, near universal if we're going to have any type of hybrid learning be, or, you know, blended learning or hybrid learning be part of the mix.
I'm so glad that this conversation.
I just want to, we're running into a, a circumstance that we often do, which is we're, we're getting tight on time. Um, and I just want to, um, you know, remind everyone that we gave you about 10 minutes in between to kind of sign off here and sign on to the board, um, uh, meeting. But, um, perhaps what we can do is try to continue, you know, try to schedule a time to continue the conversation with a little, um, you know, more breadth of, of time. Um, so I'm happy to do that. And I think part of the intent of, uh, my, my section, which it seems like we probably aren't going to have much, you know, much time for today, was to get some of your input and thoughts on next steps. You know, the first section was intended to provide you a little bit of information about what we've done. And then the, the next part was to talk a little bit about next steps. Um, you may have noticed in one of the slides that one of the top priorities for our funding is issues of connectivity and device access. Um, so the state, at the state level is also intending to prioritize, uh, getting access to, to that, that group of kids who may not have access. And we're also talking about, um, you know, the other factors that have to be considered around, um, parent, uh, IT sort of abilities. Um, so I think it goes back to your point, Malia and Milan, about, um, addressing this potentially either over the summer or with educating our students and, and families when they're more receptive or potentially they're, they're going to need kind of in-person trainings. So, um, there's conversation about what do we need to do? Maybe it's the first week of school or maybe it's, you know, before school starts to not just provide the devices and connectivity, but also provide some training and support around how to most effectively access this type of, of learning. Um, you know, we're hopeful that it can be better planned for because it won't be quite as emergent, just as you pointed out. Um, so I think, you know, then again, the next section would, would be, and I welcome if, if people want to squeeze in in the next five minutes, um, getting a little more feedback on your thoughts, um, about, you know, these priorities and addressing, uh, this school level.
Erin, if I could.
I'm assuming Jessa that, um, in the board meeting, just a second, Don. I'm assuming, go ahead, Don.
Okay. I, I just want to follow up on Karen's concern, um, and the way the issue has been addressed. Because putting my other hat on, my, my cave hat on, I'm on phone call every week with board chairs throughout the state. So I know that there are numbers of districts whose numbers don't come close to 90%. And, uh, and I am really concerned and we're talking about our urban or inner city kids. And in this whole conversation about racism and implicit bias, et cetera, uh, we cannot just gloss over that, um, thinking that we are way above 90%. That's, that's, it's a, it's not a, it's not a good figure. So, uh, yes, I do want to re- revisit this, uh, soon. And way before we get ready to go back to school.
Yeah, and I, Jess, I believe that I would assume today, um, during the board meeting, we'll be addressing some of the reopening plans, the teams, what they're working on, not what's been, what's drafted there, but what we're working on. Um, and perhaps when we see what happens in the board meeting today, we can determine how this committee can meet again. Um, I did want to, just before we close though, just to, just so, because there are so many new members on, just to go over just some of the, the background of the committee. Um, and I know Laura is not on, but, um, typically for our new members of the committee, one of our charges is legislation proposals, which, um, maybe if we could, uh, just to have those provided to the board members that did not see our legislation proposals, even though we didn't really have any legislation that went through, but they are going back in. I, I don't, I would not think that education is going to be one of them that they're going to examine, but it could be. So maybe if the board members could at least see the proposals that we did approve as a board, um, that would be helpful for the committee members. Um, obviously the committee, we deal with policy and, um, and all the different types of policies that, um, occur. This has been exceptional for us in the last few, few months. Everything we've had on our agenda, we pushed off to put in for COVID into distant learning, which is, you know, um, reasonable and, you know, expected. Um, and then the third piece is really the review of our bylaws. And, and that's why I had Jessa send them to you. We don't really have time for discussion. And, and as you note, that, those were not renewed last year, um, because we did not have a quorum to renew them. And, um, those are important to look at. That was sort of when our committee ended, um, in between our two commissioners. It was one of the things this committee was looking at. And, um, so I would encourage you to look over those, uh, bylaws. And, um, through legal, we'll figure out how, I'm, I'm assuming, Jess, are we waiting until next June to, um, redo them again? I know it's odd years and we've got, you know, we've already gone by that window. So I just wanted that, the committee to know. And also that, as Jessa had said in her agenda, that next time we will also be, you know, talking about the systemic race, racism. And, um, Jessa had some very good, uh, information. And one of, maybe just another thing that could be sent to the committee. If they weren't on the board, I think it was in February, um, Charlene, you might know, is, uh, the discipline, the student discipline that we approved. I think it was February that the board approved it. So maybe our new board members, because that is certainly a big part of that talk that we're going to have and discussion. So maybe if they could also have that document, um, you know, just to, before we meet the next time, I think would be most helpful for our board, new board members. Anything else from any board members before we have to log off and hop on to the other meeting?
Um, just one last thing. I think to, I, I sort of want to underscore a bit what, um, Don was saying, but, but maybe my own, a little twist though about it. Um, in that whatever the work is going forward, whatever those next steps are, that we are being really, um, we're being really clear, concrete, and, and our attentions are focused on, um, communities that have, um, high populations of color and black communities in order to be able to really address the bigger problems that we need to, we need to address in education in the state of Connecticut. So to get away from the all things matter all the time and really focus where we need to in order to, to get these issues addressed.
Yeah, I agree with you, Malia. You know, as we get ready to write our new comprehensive, you know, five-year plan, that certainly will be something that has to be a major focus, um, again, and really get into the weeds with it. A G?
So just to, just to clarify that, while the statewide might be what I, what I said, locally in, in particular districts, it is substantially higher. And, uh, Mr. Harris and, uh, Ms. Walton, I think you're absolutely right that the local needs are very different and the disproportionalities are evident in the data. And the report that we're developing will highlight those, uh, disproportionalities and differences. And it is definitely not a one-size-fits-all. It's a, a laser-like focus targeted to areas of highest, uh, highest need. And, uh, that is actually very clear in, in what we're seeing.
Yeah, I think it's an honor, our ability to meet our requirement of free public education, quality education for all children, when we start to require internet access for kids to get that free, um, public education. And so we really need to think about how that gets to families, um, as we're working in this virtual, virtual world. It is no longer free public education if I have to have Comcast come into my house for my kid to be able to learn.
Right. And I think, and G, I know one of the problems a lot of districts are dealing with is the, the students who are not engaged in this distant learning or were not engaged in the distant learning. Was it because of connectivity or was it because of just simply not engaged? And so that's always the, that's always a struggle too, um, to figure that out. Uh, but it is something we do have to figure out. Um, with that, we are really pressed here for time, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in a couple of minutes.
Thank you all. I'll reach out the next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.